All right, welcome everybody. It's January 21st. Let's call the meeting to order. We're here for regularly scheduled New Market School Board meeting. And let's do the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Thank you for the auditors playing along. You probably haven't done that in a while. So first item up on our agenda is public comments. Susan, I didn't receive any public comments this week.
I did not.
No public comment. I don't see anyone else online. No, so, excuse me, we'll close public comment. There's no committee report from the student representative this week. I, in terms of the building committee, I just would report the following. We had a conversation with me and Jana and Susan the other day to sort of prepare for a last meeting of the building committee, which we will schedule jointly with the school board in February. And just as sort of a, sort of as a wrap-up, we're pretty much done, done. There's just a couple of, the HVAC issues in terms of the commissioning were all finalized. There was a final walkthrough. They have some sound issues that they're going to be taken care of. We'll explain more about that at that final meeting. But it's really at the point where we're at an end. Time to probably wind up the building committee's role, thank them for their efforts again, and move on. Just a final thing, the final number left over is about 230, was that? And change, $230,000, which is a little better than what we had thought maybe in the fall, when we were thinking somewhere between 100 and, 150 to 200,000. So that number's pretty much, pretty much a good number now as a final leftover. And the board can, you know, in consultation with the administration and the building committee can look at the list of add-altnets and see what makes the most sense when we meet jointly in February. So that's it on that. Any other committee reports?
SST, we met with SST last Sunday. And we've been, so I've been involved in that for eight years, off and on. We've talked about plumbing, we've talked about electricians. They're talking about again, we've talked about beauticians, cosmetology. They're talking about that again, because those are careers and those are things people can do. I'm, I will find out more as we go along, but I will encourage all parents and students to show interest in bringing forward.
They're considering adding those things on?
They've talked about it over the years. They're talking about bringing classes into the building, so sometimes kids can't take the classes because math and English in their study schools. So they're talking about maybe having someone there. And yeah, there's some kids that, they love SST, so an extra hour, hour and a half there wouldn't hurt them. It's, it'll be interesting to see how it moves forward. You superintendent, you principal.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So we have with us tonight, Jana, do you want to introduce that from Plodzik and Sanderson are auditors. We have the audit report in our materials. And they're just going to go through it with us and explain the high points and what they saw.
So tonight we have with us Kyle Jacobus and Cheryl Pratt. They're our auditors who came on-site this summer. They are new auditors for the district this year. They, their teams really helped us this summer. As I was new to the district too, they were a great resource and continue to be so. And I asked them to come tonight to kind of present the audit report at a high level to you or should have it for you, just in case you have questions or things about some of their methodologies or some of the, some of the numbers, the way that they blend or any of those things. So I will turn it over to them. Can you share us okay Cheryl and Kyle?
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So actually, Nikki, I will start. I'm Cheryl Pratt, I'm the director with Plodzik and Kyle is your manager in charge of your audit. We've been doing audits over all of the day-to-day here for almost about 45 years now. I've been doing this for, I just had my 30-year anniversary. And this is all that we do. Kyle and I and our staff, governmental auditors, this is all we do. Winter heat pool, town, water, sewer precincts. So again, we want to thank you very much to the staff for the cooperation during this first year. The first year's always a little more difficult because of information that we have to gather and document, but everybody, they're troopers and they were very helpful in that process. So I'm going to now turn this over to Kyle and he'll go through the.
Hello, I was the auditor in charge. Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I was the auditor in charge of the Marcusville district audit. So I kind of ran the day-to-day operations of the audit and oversight of everything that's going on. So I'm going to see, presenting my screen here and going to the audit report. Okay, can you see the audit recording?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. So scroll down here, we'll get started with the independent auditors report. So this is really, really what the whole audit is about. Is this part here on whether your financials are fairly stated. So it starts off with management's responsibilities, about the finance office. Auditor's just not doing, and then we get down to your opinion. So the good news is that you received a clean opinion or unmodified opinion or all opinion units, which is what you want. Next paragraph is a change in account and principal orders were changed in the financial statements this year from what you received in the prior year. And that relates to GASB eighty-four. GASB is an acronym for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And this GASB eighty-four changes the way fiduciary funds are presented and the fiduciary funds relate to the student activity funds. So as we'll see going through, student activity funds are now recorded as a special government fund rather than they're separate fiduciary. And then the next page of the letter just highlights the other reports that are included in the financial statements, which includes mutual to pensionalized revenue, OPEC, and then combining with the budgeted non-service rules, which will be yet to. As we continue on, this next page, these are two pages are management's discussion. This is prepared by the financial office. And this is actually a good resource if you want some additional insight on what's going behind the numbers. So we present the financial statements to those that are pretty generic, interesting information, we don't necessarily explain why. This management discussion analysis is management's opportunity, opportunity to explain what behind the numbers, what drives, which means to, it also provides where your comparisons flow in the district. So if you want to know what numbers are, all that they are, this is a good place to reference. So it's quite a few pages here. And then we'll start with the basic financial statements. So we have exhibit A, which is the balance sheet, and exhibit B, which is governance expenditures or governance expenses. D are for the government wide statements. So this is the biggest picture available of the school district as a whole. And it's long-term assets and liabilities. We have capital asset, we have liability for funds, capital, leases, pension, OPEC, which aren't reflected on the fund financial statements that we've got here. These financial statements are most comparable to what you would come across in a government heading. So, yeah, so we'll move on to the fund financial statements. So we have exhibit C1, which is the balance sheet for each of the separate funds. So each fund is a separate reporting entity, if you will, that is used to report operations for each activity. So we have general fund, food service fund, federal projects, capital projects fund, and then other governmental, these are non-major funds. And this is where these student activity funds shows up this year. You want to interject?
So they can be, and they defer further detail to the other governmental funds. You can go back in the report that you have in front of you, schedules four and five, and you will get the breakdown, you can go by breakdown there.
Correct, yes. That's the, on giving general funds, you'll also notice the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, which oftentimes management is interested in. So at the end of the year, the unassigned fund balance was 1,512,024. And we'll get to that a little later for further breakdown as well. Exhibit C2 reconciles exhibit A to C1. So these are the differences between the fund financial statements and the government wide, which are the long-term assets and liabilities. And for C3, our governance expenditures for each of the separate funds. And C4 is the reconciliation of those revenues expenditures from the fund financial statements back to a government wide. And next we have exhibit D1 through D3, which are budget-to-actual schedules for major plans that have adopted budgets. So D1 is the budget-to-actual for the general fund. So again, this shows what your original budget was, your final budget, what your actual expenditures, what revenues were, and then what the difference is. And at the end, it reconciles those changes to your changing unassigned fund balance. And we have the same thing for food service fund and the federal projects. All right. One thing I'll point out, last year we had financial statements for fiduciary funds, which are the student activities. Again, due to GASB eighty-four, they're no longer presented here, which is they're part of these special government funds.
And I'll just interject on GASB eighty-four. The reason why they are no longer, their agency funds are now considered custodial funds. And the reason why your activities have been reclassified as a special revenue fund is due to the administrative control that your principals and your administrators in the schools provide over those activities. The definition in GASB eighty-four to be a custodial fund is that the individuals owning the money in the fund have the authority to expend that money. But with student activity funds, you would not have a second grade class student activity fund giving the principal permission to buy a class mascot of, say, a monkey. So all of the administrative control lies with the principals and the administrators. And that is what reclassifies it from a custodial or agency fund to a special revenue fund.
Yes, thank you. Yep, so that's kind of the similar answer. This note to C, accounting change, describes it a little more technical as the eighty-four changes. And we'll go down to note 13. This breaks out the various types of, just to highlight, and like I said, management is typically interested in the unassigned fund balance. So let's see the term numbers here versus unassigned retained. So the school district is allowed to retain up to two and a half percent. So that amount of 429,000 for the fourth. The remaining unassigned fund balance of 1,000,026,20 is the amount that is returned to reduce it down actually for the next year. Note 14, just to highlight a couple of adjustments that we made to the prior year's ending financial statements when that was previously reported. The first one, again, relates to that eighty-four. The second one relates to capital assets. And we'll discuss the capital assets a little bit further along, as that was also a suggestion, an area that needed improvement for the financial statement preparation. We have schedules 1, 2, 3. These are more detailed breakout from budget to actual for the general fund. So schedule 1 is for revenues. Schedule 2 is for expenditures. And schedule 3 shows the changes in unassigned fund balance. Beginning unassigned fund balance from the prior year, 944,026. Restful is reduced, used to do this act rate, revenue surplus, which comes from schedule 1, unexplained balance of appropriations, that's how much less you spent on budget on the expenditures, plus the changes in committed unassigned fund balance, which you to your ending unassigned fund balance, 1,000,0512,24. Additional schedules, as Cheryl mentioned earlier, schedules 4, 5, for the major funds. So we have state local grants and student activities. So based on revenues and expenditures, assets, or these funds, they didn't need the qualification to report as new plans. And then additionally, we have a breakdown of student activities for each floor. And then finally, we have the independent auditors' communication of significant deficiencies through material weakness. So the first part here is capital asset management. And we refer this as a material weakness. So when we reviewed the information provided for capital assets, there were several areas that needed collections and needed to be addressed. For example, there were assets of $100 or less that were being capitalized. There were old, unused items on the inventory list that would mean the threshold of being capital asset, but were most likely no longer here. So we did discuss this with management, they went back, updated the capital asset list. One thing that is useful or would actually require on the GASB eighty-four is to have a capital asset policy. So I know this is something that management's been working on, is to develop and adopt such a policy. Even though it's a policy that you may not use on a daily basis, which required for financial statement reporting, and helps to ensure that the financials are thoroughly presented and the assets are properly recorded. So again, management was able to go back and update the assets. It took a long time, but I do congratulate them, they made a great effort to do that. But going forward, I think adoption of a capital asset policy will be key. And we'll go to the next one, is food service inventory. This is not a material weakness, we refer that as a significant deficiency, which is not as significant or pervasive as the general weakness. But in our observation of the food and service inventory, there were discrepancies in accounts of the inventory of food service. In addition, extra bill was required to the food service fund to offset a debt, but that couldn't be determined until the inventory was corrected. So based on the combination of these factors, we refer that as a significant deficiency. And I know, again, management, as soon as we identified this issue, they went back, they recounted the inventory, so that we had an accurate number of them. Fortunately, we did the mail count in July, so none of the inventory had been used prior to that date. So we were still able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And then in a separate letter to governance, we did come across her suggestions for improving the AIs for the level of being material weakness or significant deficiency, which we discussed during the course of the audit, and in most cases, corrective action was taken right. So none of those rose to the level of being quoted, the report as a material weakness or significant deficiency. I'd like to congratulate the staff for being very responsive and helpful. The audit review was a little unconventional due to COVID precautions, and the staff was grading the records as needed, whether it was electronic or picking up records or working on site. It was a very successful first-year audit. So I would like to thank them for that. So are there any questions or Cheryl, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Yeah, no, again, I do want to thank everyone there. It has been rather, this is auditing in a different time, but everybody's very helpful. And the other thing we appreciate is that your staff wants to do it right, and they're listening to the recommendations, and it sounds like a lot of them have already been implemented or in the process of being implemented. So we applaud you. There's many times where we do make the recommendations and they will at times fall on deaf ears. And again, this is just, these recommendations are just tighter controls, they better protect whom, you know, so that nothing happens. So again, we thank you. Are there any questions that anyone has of us?
I was just wondering if you could explain, because it's always a fun issue, and it's difficult sometimes for folks that don't do this all the time to wrap their heads around. Kyle did touch on it. But we, can you explain in more detail what the difference between the total unassigned fund balance, which was the 1,005, versus the unassigned balance that we were sent back to reduce tax rate? Can you explain how those numbers come together? Because the town has been told, you know, we turned back 1,0082,20, which we did. But the number that's in the audit that people will look at is the 1,005. And it has to do with that retained balance, but I just wanted to highlight that out so that people understand that that's the difference in that number.
All right, so again, I think that's best highlighted in note 13. But again, the uncontained retainers, the one article, I think we actually looked up earlier today, it was 2013, one article the district adopted. And space statutes allow the district to retain up to two and a half percent of their appropriations to pay for the emergency. Sorry, what am I saying there? The district has an option to retain that much, they don't have to. But anything in excess of that needs to be returned to reduce the tax rate. So that's, that's what the difference between those two numbers.
Thanks.
Does the board have any questions?
I just have one comment, Mike. The areas that have been mentioned as policy updates, Jana has given to Patty for us to start that process, so those things are going to happen as well.
Thank you. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. It's tough to present, Kyle, especially online, to try to present financial information. So you did a great job, and we really appreciate it. And we're, thank you for your report. It was, it was easy to read, at least for me, but thank you. And it doesn't appear that the board has any questions.
All right, we'll thank you for your turn.
All right, have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye.
All right, next up on the agenda is the, Jana, your quarterly report, and that's in our materials as well. All right, next up on the agenda is the, uh, Jana, your quarterly report, that's in our materials as well.
Right, um, so you obviously have the materials in front of you. But kind of to give you the big, the big overriding issue. See, kind of throughout this form of reports is the receipt of the supplemental public school response funds. Um, so if you were to put this report next to the one I gave you in September, you would look and you would see that there were lines that were over expended in September and all of a sudden magically they're not. So, um, I just want to talk, I'll start off with that piece because it kind of explains some of the opposite. It's been a key in the context. So, um, that money was awarded retroactively. Um, there was a key part of the award, the first part of the grant did not need to apply for. It was just a willing to, but you might have had to put them into that report, the whole amount that they gave. There was second, that you had to do that in the process for, meaning that you had to gather amounts in excess of you, you award amount. Um, you could apply, but there was a finite amount of money, it's a money value. So depending, you know, depending how many people put into that second amount, the state said that they would throw away that money. So even though we submitted, um, funds in excess of this, we received, uh, we didn't want to say rates before, but we received, um, sixty-eight percent of reimbursement on the funds that we write in. So all of a sudden, we, a total amount of, uh, this COVID year. We have a total amount of four hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and five hundred roughly came in. And if you recall, when we look at last, uh, our last financial statements, those, those expenditures sat in our general fund. Um, showing lines over expended. So when we got this money, we now have moved it over to our grants fund. It doesn't mean it disappeared, but we took those expenditures out of that one fund and moved it into the grant fund where we had that revenue. So, um, that might help explain if you remember last time, I think it looks a little strange. Um, so that's the big, the big, uh, issue. Um, you'll notice that the very, I presented it the same way we did last time. So you have the, by function code, which is the way you've seen it in the past. And then I, we presented it in a second view, same numbers, um, but by kind of, kind of expenditure category. So salaries and benefits, um, operations, supplies, that kind of thing. So that you can kind of see the same numbers viewed a different way that might be a little bit more, um, easy to digest. Because it's the, the form of things that we all know. Um, and then, you know, I, I thought last, the other, um, item that I wanted to mention is when we presented these last time, software system had not been encumbering some of our benefits, meaning that usually it will encumber it, lock it up. So it doesn't show in the available fund balance because we know we're going to expend it by the end of the year. Um, we're still working with our software vendor to get it to do that automatically. But, um, Teresa, um, who is our payroll coordinator, was good enough to kind of manually encumber. So at least when you're looking at these numbers now, you don't see that we have like eighty-two percent of our benefits still outstanding. Um, and I did hear that they have a resolution, so I'm hoping that in the next quarter, we will use the system to appropriately encumber and unencumber as we process payroll. And we will eliminate the manual mechanism that we have in place. But it, it's a process, the first thing we're starting with is retirement and then we're going to morph into the health insurance. It's just a, it's a more accurate way, uh, to reflect our financial statements. And, and our system is capable of doing it, it just never had been brought online that way before. Um, so those were kind of the two big things that you'll probably notice if you compare them, uh, back and forth. Um, our revenues, of course, last time I predicted a little bit of a shortfall. Well, when you add in the revenues now, we're looking at coming out a little bit ahead of what we predicted. So overall, the, the, you know, that, those funds were, um, appreciated by school districts across the state, including us. Um, definitely helped our, our relative financial position. Um, and there is more money coming, they have not yet awarded it. We haven't received information about how that's going to look or what we do, but, or how long the term is going to be or anything. It's been kind of vague. Um, but we do know that some of the purposes that it can be used for. Um, and we are ready to capitalize on that as soon as they, as soon as they release it to us. So I guess that's really all I had, unless you had any, uh, specific questions on any of those items.
Actually, I can have a question. On the salaries of the teachers that we hired, the additional teaching staff for the, for the year.
Yep.
I guess I'm confused why it's such a small amount.
That's a great question. That, the funding that we got, the, the four hundred and fourteen thousand, we were able to use some of that on salaries and benefits.
Oh, you were?
Yes, so that was a component. And so what we did, we, we, um, we thought we were pretty creative, uh, with the funding because we also have E S R funds. And we had initially booked, um, certain technology expenditures into those E S R funds. So we pulled that grant application, changed it all up. We put the salaries up to twelve-thirty, which was the expiration date for these funds into this grant. And then we, and we were able to take advantage of all the things that we'd expended, like technology and, and, and certain different things. We were able to group into here, um, so we didn't have to put that in E S R. So what we did is we took the salaries from January to June and that's what we put in E S R. So, um, we were able to offset those additional teaching positions between the two funding buckets. We still, we still will be over at the end of the year, but not nearly as much as it was looking like we would.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Jana. You're, you dominate the agenda tonight, so we'll stay with you. So next up is the COVID nineteen related funding.
Yep, that, that actually was a component of my report, um, and I just highlighted in on the agenda just, because that really is the prevalent, uh, guiding force. So, um, that's kind of where we're at now, we're in a much, uh, different position than we were last quarter with that. Sorry.
You have to repeat everything you just said.
I hope not, because I don't remember all of it.
Number, number four on the agenda, we touched on a little.
Yep, um, so this is something that I want to make the board aware of. Um, I don't know if you've ever been in a position before where you've needed to access, um, fund, funding beyond what was appropriated. But I wanted to take a moment, just because this year is so strange, um, to kind of talk to you about the mechanisms that are in place for school districts if you get to that place. So as you know, per statute, whatever's appropriated on that ballot, even if we get revenues that come in in addition to that, we can't expend more than what the taxpayer is appropriated, not even by a penny. So the expenditure side are kind of locked in. So here we've had this year where we've gotten all this additional funding that's coming in. And it, and it will impact in our bottom line, but we're still held to that appropriated expenditure amount. I don't foresee us exceeding the appropriated amount. But I wanted to make you aware that there are mechanisms in place in the event that it looks like that might happen due to something unforeseen. And we do have two resources available to do that. So the first one is that contingency fund that Kyle talked about, um, that two and a half percent that we retained. There's a process that you go through, it's kind of outlined, highlighted, um, the piece that's important. So you would have to hold a public hearing, um, and take action on using those funds. Um, you have to publicize it, um, you have to allow for public input and all of those things. But that is a means, should we have to get there. Um, the second means of doing that is, as I mentioned, all this unanticipated revenue has come in and it's sitting in our, in our, uh, revenues. However, there is a mechanism for us to be able to expend upon those, um, those revenues and increase our bottom line if we had to. Um, and that is this appropriation of unanticipated funds. And again, it kind of lays out the same sort of process for you, we would have to hold a public hearing. Um, you would take action on it to be able to do that. Um, and, you know, there's a notice. It just kind of, I just kind of wanted to let you know that those two mechanisms are out there because I know that a lot of residents are, are probably, and, and the budget committee and others, officials in town are always thinking about, you know, what is going to happen at the, you know, with COVID. And we really don't know how it's going to spend out, um, at the end of the year. However, you know, as I said, I, at this point, I do not anticipate that we will overexpend the appropriated budget. But I wanted to provide the board with a means to, you know, know that there is a mechanism for this and what's involved with that, should that event happen.
So what is the, can you walk through the timelines, um, from making the decision? Or we inform the board that, um, we have the potential to, uh, overspend the budget and therefore we'd like to access unanticipated revenues that have come in or access the two and a half percent? What, can you just walk them just briefly through the steps so that they have a, an understanding of that?
Sure, um, so basically what, if that were the event, what we would need to do is we would follow the, the, the RSA's and they're just, they're a little, they're slightly different, but both of them say that we would, we would put a notice into the paper under either one of these RSA's saying that we were going to have a public hearing at the board level um, to discuss either, um, accessing our funds under the contingency fund or, um, appropriating unanticipated funds, um, from using the revenues of one ninety-eight cool and twenty. Um, you have to post that in, I believe it's seven days before the meeting. Um, you would, you'd basically open the hearing, you would discuss your rationale for why you felt that this needed to happen. Um, you would entertain public input should there, or, or, um, or thought from your, your residents. Um, and then at that time, you would go ahead and you would be able to take, um, take a vote on that. The school board minutes would be our record, that would be what we would send up to be able to, to the Department of Revenue to say that we'd followed the process, we are going to overexpend our appropriated budget and we are going to access these funds in order to make sure that we comply with the statute that says we can't overexpend our appropriated budget. So it, it will take a little, it would take a time, a little time. It's not something that you would want to, uh, get to the end of the year and find out that, you know, you're in that situation. Many attorneys, including ours, had said, with the funding that we got in, they just recommended to many districts to say, just hold the public hearing, saying that you're going to extend, you know, use the unanticipated funds. Doesn't mean you have to do it, but you would at least have the ability to do that if the event arise, arose. So that's an option too, you could just preemptively hold that hearing to say that you would access it. But again, at this point, I, I don't see an indication that that's going to be our situation this year, things can change. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to you to let you know what, what the process is and, and what, what, how it would look if, if.
Jana, I have a question, so if, when you say things would have to change, can you kind of put like a, an amount on that? Like something that would, you know, lead us in that direction?
If you look at the, the quarter, I just put them away, but my quarterly statements, right now, we still have over three million dollars in appropriated funds that, um, we are carrying right now. Um, and every month, and, and again, remember, you know, the thing that, that made me really nervous about not having benefits encumbered is because if you don't have it encumbered, it looks like you're sitting on more money, but we have encumbered that. And as we're going through the year and we're finding things in the business office that might be a repetitive service, I'm suggesting to my staff, I'd like you to make a P O for the expected amount. Because when you make a purchase order, it locks that money up, so it doesn't look like it's just sitting there. So I can't say we found everything yet, but I can say that we've found a whole lot more, um, items that we can reflect. So that when I give you your numbers, I have more faith that that's really what we, we have at this time in our budget and that there aren't things hiding out there that we're not.
Is that why, I was, when I was reading the report, there was something about P Os?
The audit report.
The audit report about eleven out of, I forget, I can't remember the exact numbers. But referring to when you say, you, the P Os, that or not, that you're finding them?
Um, I believe the finding, I'd have to look back at the finding in the, um, what the auditor, which one you.
It was like one of the, one of the findings that, um.
They did a sample thirty-two dispersments and eleven didn't.
Uh, yes, so that does, that does, uh, loosely kind of align with that. So in our, in our practice and what my, my team is, is doing a great job of, um, at this point, because we, we've had some chances to put some processes in place and kind of build a, a good structure. So the goal is that we always would have a purchase order in place in advance of an expenditure. And the first part of the getting a purchase order is the requisition process, which is a please, may I purchase, um, process. So we have a process for doing that automatically on our software system. That then turns into a purchase order. And what the finding in the audit report had to do with is there was a whole bunch of expenditures that didn't have a P O, um, that had been purchased. So we can do that, but I try, I've talked to our facility staff, um, I, I mean, on an occasion, you can think of like, if you have a leaking roof, you don't have time to do a requisition, you got to fix it, you might have to go get a tarp or whatever. But those should be a, a minimum of the things that happen. And what we've put in place for a mechanism of that, if it does happen and you don't have the time to follow the process, then please email Susan and, or email me so that at least I can give you a verbal, uh, an approval in email saying, yep, I, I got it, we have to take care of this, this is what we need to do. So, um, I think the auditors are going to be pleased when, um, we look at the documentation we've been compiling since July because we've put a lot of that documentation in place, um, with every payable. So it's, it's part of just building in those structures, but yes, that is, that is part of what they were talking about.
Okay, thank you.
I did have a question too about, so there's a two-point-five percent emergency holdover, for lack of a correct term.
Right.
So assuming that's not spent the following year, that goes back to the tax rule?
Yep.
Gotcha, thank you.
It's just, it's just, um, what I was trying to, um, have them kind of bring out to you is that the real amount we could have returned was like a million five. But we did that contingency fund, which means that if something were to happen, we could access that. That still is money that belongs back in, back to the taxpayers if we don't access it.
Gotcha, perfect.
Yeah, the legislature enacted that about five or six years ago.
They did.
Idea was to have a little there so you weren't focusing with the tax rate.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, and just so you know, towns can retain more than schools can. Schools, I, that I highlighted, it said five percent in here, this is a change that just happened. Um, they've increased that two and a half percent to five percent for schools. But towns have always been able to retain, I believe it's up to ten percent of, of their net assessed value. Um, so I have a call in, I have to follow back up with Cheryl and Kyle because I said, are we gonna, does this mean that we need to go back out with a warrant article to the town to say it's okay to withhold up to five percent now, because they changed the statute? It used to be capped at two and a half, but I have to look at what your warrant said when the town voted on it. Um, because as far as I know, it's still two and a half.
Yeah.
Um, so we may, we may have to bring that back, um, to the voters to see if they'll approve up to. And again, it doesn't mean you have to retain all of that.
But, but it's also, it's up to two and a half.
Exactly.
You could do one if you want.
Yeah, you can do any, you can do any amount up to.
Yeah.
Um, so I will be coming back to the board once I get some clarity on that as to what we do. Obviously, we missed, uh, this cycle for the warrant article, the earliest we'd be able to, if it requires that, the earliest we'd be able to do that would be the next budget cycle.
Now, the two-point, two and a half, um, how, how many years was, is that in, like, when the warrant, the original warrant article?
I think she's, I think they, they, we researched it, I think in two thousand fourteen, that was voted here in Newmarket.
And it's for how?
It's, it's until, until rescinded. So it would just, it would just be something that we would discuss. Um, and I believe, I believe Dave Jack, um, brought it to you. Um, it, it might have been a combination of Dave and I last summer. And we, we allowed the board to discuss whether you wanted to withhold the full two and a half or, or if you wanted a different number. And the board voted to retain that two and a half last year.
Okay.
You weren't sure what COVID expenses were going to look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was discussing there.
Well, and we didn't know that we were going to get revenue. And some of the revenue they said that we would get, um, through FEMA, then they changed their mind, so.
And this, this, this sort of revenue discussion, just keep in mind, um, you know, it's still an open, but this year is probably pretty wrapped up in terms of state revenues, next year might be a different story.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that's going to be the effect of COVID is next year.
Yeah, and, and maybe beyond, Mike. You know, it's, um, it's going to depend on how quick. You know, it's, it's going to depend on how quickly things kind of get back to a sense of, of normalcy and how, how we move forward. You know, we do think about that a lot as we're looking at our expenditures and managing the budget that we have for the school, you know, and there, while you don't want to appropriate funding that you lose and return too much to the town, in this environment, I feel like conservative is, is a good way to go, because if we have additional projects that we can't do, or we have funding left at the end of the year, this may not be a bad year to turn some of that back. So, you know, and you'd asked me before about the, I believe it was Chairman Kennison, when, when we returned, when we calculated the unrestricted fund balance that went back to offset taxation, and you kind of said, well, this is kind of a one-up. And I'd said to you at the time, I don't know that this is a one-up, because, because we prepared the budget that we're in right now in pre-COVID. So we're, we're really, you know, working, and it may be even a cycle beyond that where we're still kind of being very fluid and, and flexible with our management.
Gianna, I had another question about the food service balances.
Yes.
What is that all about? How, how are we just wiping out the balances?
Well, again, this, there is a, the food service fund, from an accounting standpoint, not a practical standpoint, not a student balance, but from an accounting standpoint, is a district fund. So while it operates independently, at the end of the year, when our auditors come, everything comes back under one. And if there's a deficit in that fund, we make that, we have to take it from the general fund, Fund 10, to offset. So that, that's correct. But in this district, there was a misinterpretation of what that meant. And we caught it this summer when we were doing the audit, but in the past, what they did is rather than carrying the student balances forward, they interpreted that law to mean that the student balances were also set to zero, and that's not the case. You can still, you still should be carrying those uncollected student balances forward and trying to collect on them. It doesn't mean that the district doesn't make the food service fund whole and, and cover them, but those are still collectible balances and should still be pursued. So that was one of the, the changes that we made relative to food service. We've implemented a couple of things relative to food service. We are now doing quarterly inventory self-audits where someone from, I've gone once and my new assistant, Tammy, has gone, and we kind of do a spot inventory of about 10%, just to make sure, because that was a finding, so we're doing that.
So the inventory is like loaves of bread, cans and stuff?
Yeah. There's a freezer, there's a fridge, a cold service, and then there's dry goods, but.
And that's what the audit was, in the inventory, is, is the actual.
They were talking about the real food.
Yeah.
Yep. And there was a, there was a, an issue, again, I think it stemmed from a misunderstanding about if you got a case of six cans of, of something and you opened the case, there had been a practice of not inventorying that case because it was opened. But those cans all have a value. And so when the auditors went over, that's, those were the sorts of mistakes that they found. They found some things that were on the list, that were miscounted or that weren't. And again, to, to give credit to our food service staff, if you remember, we were, we were in COVID at the end of last year, we had a freezer malfunction, we had to empty out one food service department and move all of the food to the other school. There was a shifting in personnel. There were a lot of things going on with food service, and they have been fantastic as far as helping us, working with us hand in hand to put things in place to make sure that going forward, we're all, we're all looking at the same things. I've met with Linda Hoppe several times, we're working pretty collaboratively on doing some pretty cool things with the food service department. And so I think that, I think that was probably a, a kind of a one-up and a circumstantial kind of thing. And I do believe that we've rectified it going forward.
Any questions on that aspect? Any further questions? And last but not least, is the long-awaited, greatly appreciated shared services facility director, we have somebody?
We do.
Yeah?
Mr. Devon Lockley will be joining us on February 8th. I am very excited to have him on board. He currently is working, as you know, this is a shared position with the town.
She's understating her excitement.
I'm holding it in. He is currently working in a situation that is a shared sort of role, too. He works for a, a management company, but the management company puts him in charge of a, of a college, a small college here in New Hampshire. So he had kind of has the two bosses that he's working for now, which both Steve and I felt, felt would be an easy shift for him to make where, where you're working for two organizations. In addition, he has some incredible background with, in electric. He is a master electrician in Massachusetts. He's a journeyman electrician in Massachusetts, and he has indicated that he'd be willing to transfer those licenses. It's a, it's kind of a reciprocity sort of thing.
Did he not look at the town hall wiring before?
You're going to scare him off if he's listening, Gary.
Sorry, sorry.
Electricity works a little differently in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
Yeah. But in addition to that, he has, he actually taught master electrician classes at a community college, so he's very knowledgeable, very, very professional. We were so highly impressed, it was, the committee was pretty much unanimous. We had a, a group of, of eight individuals. We had four from the town, we had three from the school, and I brought in Ken Lynch. We were happy to borrow him. He is the facility director for Portsmouth Schools, and he was generous enough to sit in on our committees and our interviews and was a great help. But we, we had some really strong candidates in the pool. There were many of them that could have done, you know, a great job. We were very fortunate. But we did select Mr. Lockley, and we are both, Steve and I are both very, very excited to get him on board and get him up and running. I hope to bring him to you maybe in February, if that's okay, so that maybe you can meet him and we can kind of talk about some of the projects that we have keyed up and ready to, ready to roll with facilities.
I wanted to say that maybe people could see his face and recognize him around town, but we're all wearing masks, so.
Right.
So just, just a few things, I wanted, Gianna, thank you so much, you know, for doing that whole process. And to the board, you know, it, you know, a hiring like this means so much, because Gianna, since really she stepped foot in the door, has been handling, you know, Greg Miles has been good and has been helping us as, as much as he can, but he's not on site every day. You know, so when something comes up, you know, it's often, you know, it can be a technical issue and, and, you know, Gianna's not an HVAC expert, she's not an electrician, but, but she's handled this stuff nonetheless. And, and we, you know, we, we had some HVAC commissioning issues, you know, at the end of the project, which is not unusual, but, but Gianna was able to handle all those things, you know, in, in addition to her day job, you know? So having the right people in place doing the right things, you know, it sounds self-evident, but it, it's huge. And, and so this means Gianna can spend more time doing, you know, what, what she's, what she should be doing. And we have somebody in place, we've got these brand-new facilities, somebody in place to make sure that, that we, that we, they don't prematurely depreciate, that the maintenance is getting done. You know, somebody, somebody's on top of it. And, and so that, I mean, this is, this is a big deal. You know, for instance, example of this week, when we had our meeting, I didn't, I didn't mention this particularity, that from the very beginning of the facilities project, we wanted to complete it in such a way that we were checking all the boxes in case the state aid came back for school building. In 2000, during the Great Recession, it went away, the state, the state took it away. They brought it back last year in, in minimal form, but we wanted, one of the, the boxes we needed to check off is to make sure we have a maintenance plan. There's a statute that says that a school has to have a maintenance plan. You know, 10 or so years ago, just before the moratorium, the legislature decided that if we were going to, you know, fund schools, that we want them, you know, to, to remain in good shape and just not let, let these, these, these capital assets, you know, go, go down because they weren't appropriately, you know, maintained. But Gianna probably hated me a little bit this week, but I had her follow up with a, with a statement to make sure that we were doing what we needed to do in that regard in terms of, of, of recording our maintenance plan. We have a, in, in the, the new facilities director will continue to develop this, but we have a software program, something really that we saw when we were, you know, touring the state five or six years ago and looking at other schools, that, that is seamless. It does everything from schedule. If you have a computer problem in your classroom, the teacher can type in a service ticket or a lights out, or, you know, you put in all your maintenance schedules for everything you have in your school and you have a record of it. That takes, that takes a lot to maintain, but it beats having, hiring somebody and in, in all the knowledges either in their head or in some, you know, file with written down papers that nobody else can understand. These, these are big things, and Gianna's been helping, you know, ramp that up, too. So thank you a lot.
So we're getting that software?
We have it.
We have it already.
We bought it last year, and Dave Jack, before he left, worked with the company to update that and get our assets in place, so.
That's great.
You can, you can schedule soccer fields with it. I mean, it's good.
Oh, really? I don't know that we have that module, but it is a module that you, you can.
We have the two modules, the one that, the help ticket one, you referenced, the teacher in the classroom kind of thing. We have that one, and then we have the preventative maintenance module whereby, that was what they were doing this summer, that we paid them, they came out and they actually did an audit of all of our systems and our equipment, and they uploaded that to the system. And then you would go in and look at a particular asset, and if it's, for example, an oil furnace, you, and you have to, we only have one of those, but if you have to service it once a year, you put that in and it will kick out a ticket for you and just say, hey, this is what you have, you know, to do. So it's a system. We have not yet fully got our arms around all of its capabilities, and I'm really hoping that with the addition of Devon to, to the staff, that we're going to be able to really make that an excellent tool and make it easier for the people in the buildings to, you know, request help when they need it. And like Mike said, it, it takes a while to set up and figure, figure this out, and we just, we haven't had the, the human capital to just devote to that system. But it's, it's a very exciting system, and I, I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be really key in making sure that we don't have any periods of transition where things drop.
And it does have multiples, a SchoolDude is a tool that's used pretty commonly in schools around the country, and it has multiple modules.
Right.
My prior school district, we use that, those modules, but we also use the scheduling software and the IT work order system. And the advantage is that teachers on their desktop or laptops now, if they have anything that is going on, they can just click on the little SchoolDude icon and they can put a work order ticket in just like that. You know, they can check the schedule of the buildings to see if anything's going on, and when you have after-school events, when we can get back to normal life, you can. Their room, so they can have a club in their room, and then the maintenance staff knows that somebody's in that area where they're occupied and all of that. It's, it's really quite a wonderful management tool that helps you to be able, and to track it, too. So when, if somebody is constantly having a drip in the faucet or a light that's going out, then you can see for every piece of equipment if that's an ongoing issue. And so if you keep burning out a ballast or something like that, then there's something going on, because ballasts don't burn out over and over again, you know, they last multiple years. So it, it helps them to be able to start to see patterns and detect things over time. It also helps you to be able to understand how much money you're spending on various different activities and, and so, and it will help you track, you know, activity related to your warranties. And so last year, you know, that was a huge, you know, push on my part, because I, I've been in a building project that ended, and then you didn't get that inventory, and then you couldn't leverage your warranties. And so that was one of the reasons why Dave Jack worked on that. But as Gianna said, without having the human capital, you can't keep that up. We never got it rolled out to the teachers, because we just didn't have the capacity to do that. But one other thing I just want to say, too, just as Mike said, obvious, right? But one of the things that maybe was a little bit uncomfortable last year was this idea that we would move away from shared services for this position of business manager and finance, because it was a hard-fought and well-publicized initiative in the community. And I think already you can see the value of having a full-time business administrator on a school side, and I know Steve feels the same on the town side, that what he's able to do and what they're able to do is significantly greater in terms of quality and timeliness of information than you could ever do otherwise. So I think, you know, Gianna certainly is a, is a great addition to our staff, but also I wanted to point out that the, the support from the board to restore that position to a full-time position is very much appreciated by the entire administrative team, so thank you very much.
Wasn't MRI, wasn't that the person who came in and did the other audit, too, that basically told us what a huge mistake we made and people weren't prepared, people weren't trained, and we.
I think they broke it to us more gently.
I think we were a town.
But, but along that line, yeah, but just, and Susan, you said something that, that reminded me to thank Steve Fornier and Tony Weinstein for working with us before this hire on the, on the memorandum of understanding, and, and the, and the town council as well for adopting it. This is a, you know, it is much of a no-brainer as, as you could have in terms of a shared, shared services thing. I'm sure, you know, Greg did a good job while he was here in noticing a lot of, you know, things that, that we could combine on, so we're not, you know, needlessly having different systems or spending money. And I suspect we'll have more of that in the years to come. Thank you, Gianna. Any other questions for Gianna? Okay. So moving on to action items, we have minutes in our packet from January 7th. I'd seek a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve both public and non-public minutes from January 7th.
Second.
Are there any edits or changes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And somebody, Gary, do you have a manifest?
I do.
Seek a motion to approve the manifest, and Gary will give us the amount.
Make a motion, we approve the manifest for 12221, total amount 820,471.32.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? If none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. First of all, the next item is, is to accept Penny Bartman's resignation as school clerk. Before we do that, I'd like to thank Penny for her many years of service in that role. It's a lot of extra work and especially around voting time, and she always, always made the trains run on time, and, and that's a, a service that, that goes underappreciated, but not, not by us. So thank you very much, Penny. With that said, I'd, I'd accept the motion to accept Penny Bartman's resignation as school clerk.
Second.
Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's approved unanimously. And then, relatedly, the, I'd seek a motion to appoint Terry Littlefield as interim school clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Any comment or discussion?
Thanks to Tony, to Terry for setting up in that way.
Yep, right before the town meeting, too, so thank you, Terry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's approved, it's unanimous. Is there any other business for the public meeting?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion, I move that any discussion regarding renewing the superintendent's contract, which is not required until December, till September, not occur until after the March town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I just want to be really clear, this is not about whether or not to renew a contract, it's about transparency, trust, and timing, and I think that the board needs to take the opportunity to engage the town, decide on a process that is fair, reasonable, transparent, before moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comment? Any other comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion is denied. I would seek a motion to go into non-public pursuant to 91A3, Roman 2A, B, and C. And by roll-call vote, Mr. Swanson.
Aye.
Ms. McKinney.
Aye.
Mike Kennison's an aye, Ms. Shelton.
Tilton.
Ms. Tilton.
Aye.
So we're in non-public at 608. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Susan.